Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for February 8, 2011. Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Foy?
Here.
And Supervisor Parks?
Here. And this morning, we're honored to have our Moment of Inspiration with Harriet Wiegand. If you'd like to step up, and she's from the Disabilities Ministries, and give us an inspiring start.
Thank you so much for letting me come in and speak a little bit today. I've had so many things happen since I was here last. On the surface, a lot of them appear to be bad, but once I started digging around, they actually were good. December was a difficult month. It's been a difficult time for everyone, you included, I'm sure, but it really was hard, really was hard. I was supposed to be attending a Christmas party at Ark the week before Christmas, and I called and said, "I can't make it. It's a bad year. I must have done something really wrong because Santa put rocks in my socks." And Santa Claus, who is actually Albert Garibay, said, "Oh, no, oh, no, we'll miss you." We got through Christmas, and things still were difficult: friends dying, health problems, just one thing after another. And I reached a point to where I started questioning my effectiveness in life. Am I really doing what I should be doing? I'm tired. I put in maybe eight to 10 hours a day on that computer, talking to people around the country, around the nation, and everyone's going through a difficult time, and I can't help. I feel like a Band-Aid. And I started to weep, and the phone rang. This was the middle of January. I answered the phone, and someone said, "I'm parked in your alley, Harriet, and I've got a present for you. I don't know why, but I'm supposed to get it to you today." Nobody told me that, but in my heart, I know, I need to get this to you. And I said, "Okay, I'll be right out." I know, and out to the alley, and there's this woman with a package, and she's very agitated. And I took the package, and I said, "Thank you," and I went into the garage, red eyes, weepy, the whole thing, and I opened the package. And inside that package was my answer. It was an apron, and I knew that it was my message from God, and she wanted me to know that I was to serve. That's all that was important. I lifted it up and discovered that it had two sides. One side, nice and dark, so spots and stains wouldn't show, and the other side was a panel that had a picture of the Last Supper with all the disciples in Christ, and I knew that was my answer. The timing on that was so incredible, it had been sitting at Ark for maybe three weeks, but that woman to deliver that package at exactly that moment was something so special. And Marty, you need to remember that. You're not going to retire. You're going to redirect. You're going to take everything that you've learned through your service and through your time, through the years, and you're going to put it in a whole new area, and you're going to have a freedom with it. It's going to be a joyful thing. I immediately went back out into the community, and I went to a halfway house, to a rehabilitation program, and I spoke to a group of people that had addiction problems. And one of them was a macho young man. He was, you know, with the colors and the whole bit, and he said, "I like being controlled. That's who I am. I don't like being controlled." And I went, and I opened my arms, and I held him, and he held me, and I kissed him on the cheek, and I rubbed his face, and he snuggled in like a little child. And then I leaned back, and I said, "Guess what? I just controlled you. You don't have a control issue, you have a trust issue. And when you can trust, you're right there. Keep trusting." After that, went out to lunch. Albert took me out to lunch. Albert's involved with all of this, and he took me to the Tower Club. I hadn't been in there for years. That doesn't fit our budget plan. I discovered something up there. I can't hear in there. Because of the hearing loss and the acoustics in the room, I can't hear. The waitress came over, and she told us what was on the menu, and she looked at me, and I said, "Albert will order first." And Albert did, and I said, "I'll have whatever he's having, but no soup or salad." She went. I'm sitting there, watching Albert eat his soup, and I'm beginning to wonder, what am I going to be eating? What did I just do? Albert's a free spirit. He could have ordered just about anything. And I said, "Albert?" "Yes, Harriet? What are you having for lunch?" "Ostrich." "Ostrich? How in the world? How am I going to explain this one? How am I going to go tell my grandchildren that Granny just ate Big Bird?" I learned three things in one month. One, doesn't make any difference how you do it. Serve. 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 That's your call. Serve. You don't have to control. There's no control thing. Trust. If you can't hear, admit to it. If you don't know what the next step is, it's okay. To serve, and that's what all of you are doing in here. You never know how much you mean to me, each one of you. I have two special people in this room behind me. One of them is my son Billy, and the other is my niece Bonnie. And I think if you spoke to either one of them, they would tell you that the most important thing you can do in this life is simply serve the others around you. Thank you for being here. Bye.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you very much, Harriet. At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance for our Valentine. Kathy Long, please.
Please join me, and over here, ready to begin. (Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under one individual liberty and justice law.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before Harriet, before you leave, Harriet, I just want to thank, over here, Harriet. I just want to thank you for all the good work you've done in Oxnard, you know, and also for the festivities that you have for, can you hear me? I just want to thank you for all the good work you've done, especially over in Oxnard from the trail, from the Ed Hunt Trail that runs from the park all the way to the beach for disabled individuals to enjoy the beach out there for our residents in the city of Oxnard. So I just want to thank you for your good work that you do. That's just only one of many, many things that you do, so I want to thank you for that.
You know, it's not me, it's the community.
That's right.
I have never been turned down.
But you're the community, so.
I'm just, I'm so blessed by all of you.
So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I would hug you.
We're hugged.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to adoption of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
(Inaudible).
We've got a motion and a second, and this takes us to November in our minutes, so that's great to see. That's very close. We're probably right about up to speed now. That passes unanimously, and we'll now go to agenda review with our CEO.
Yes, Madam Chair, there's an addendum, agenda item, and it's a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, and consent agenda item number 11, there's a request for continuous to February 15, 2011. And then there's also a request on item 29, the regular item, to hear that at 10:30. I believe the E.J. Harrison Company will be here at that time and be able to answer some questions.
I was reading my notes. It said, "Be sure to ask for this," item 29 to be, and I wasn't listening. Did you say item 29 after 10:30?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. We'll work to see that we hear that after 10:30 or 10:30. Does anybody have any other items that they'd like to poll or change on the agenda? I do have just one that I have a question on, which is item 15, and we have these hazardous material discharge reports monthly, probably weekly, actually. And the question I have on this is oftentimes it will say something like unknown amount of, you know, sewage, or some trans oil or other things. My question is, when it says unknown, it seems to me that we might be able to categorize it a little better, you know? Is it 100,000 gallons, or is it two gallons? And maybe if we can take a look at that and get back to me to see if we can do that. But certainly, I do approve the item, and at this point, we'll have consent items all the way through to item 17. Pardon me?
We need a motion on the agenda review first.
Move the agenda as modified.
Sir.
Thank you.
First one for the day.
Okay. And then with that, we have to look at our consent agenda with all items except for item 11, which has been continued.
Who's the consent calendar?
If we could all vote.
Oh.
All right, here we go. See who else we can catch up.
You enjoyed that too much, Roberta.
We have one public comment card, and that's Bert Perella. Good morning, Bert.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisor, staff. My name is Bert Perella, resident in Oxnard. I'm here to say thank you. I would like to say thank you to Assistant, Special Assistant District Attorney for Ventura County, Michael D. Schwartz. I'd like to say thank you for his taking my concerns as a citizen in Ventura County on behalf of the public. I'd like to thank him for acting on behalf of the public's right to witness and participate in the workings of government via the California state law, commonly called the Brown Act. His recent decision on my concerns about the Economic Development Corporation of Oxnard and the method with which the board acted led to his letter informing Economic Development Corporation of Oxnard, commonly called EDCO, that there is some issues that they have to address. This is not the first time that Mr. Schwartz, to my knowledge, has acted on behalf of the public. The last time that I'm personally aware of was with the real school district, when the public was not allowed to participate in the public comment portion of the meetings at the school board. I feel that the Assistant District Attorney, Mr. Michael D. Schwartz, is a tremendous asset to the District Attorney's office. I'm hoping the District Attorney is aware of this, and I'm here to publicly thank Mr. Schwartz, but also let Mr. Totten know that he has a tremendous asset, and also let the public know that if there is any concerns about how the public is potentially not allowed to participate, either through speaking or witnessing the public's business in action, there is an opportunity to speak to an individual in the District Attorney's office that has done a tremendous service to the public, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, and it's nice to hear publics getting their representative.
Mr. Perella, I understand you spoke recently at Oxnard School Board meeting, and that you were very effective and actually changed that decision, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so now, we'll go on to our board comments. Supervisor Foy, are you interested in one of these?
Sure.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, but, and also say congratulations to Megan Wisler. Boy, this is loud today. She's 20-year-old from Moore Park. She was just recently selected as Miss Ventura County, and she's on her way to the Miss California. I know we had that last year, and so, boy, East County's doing well with these young ladies, huh? I love that, so it was great. We also, matter of fact, Supervisor Parks and I had the tremendous opportunity and privilege to go to the Reagan Library with this centennial, and it was spectacular. It really was spectacular. You couldn't ask for a better day. You could sit up on the top and look out and see the islands. It was beautiful, and a lot of great music and great people coming to speak, and it was just, it was just something really special. And again, the night before, they had a nice concert and had a lot of different people in there, and they had the Beach Boys singing. Let me tell you, after, those guys have been singing for 50 years, so. They brought some younger voices to get those high notes in there, but it was, it was just, it was just great. And the library itself is, the new educational part of the library is really good. I mean, it really gives a whole history, not just of Reagan, but all of what was going on, the wars and all the other issues and events, and where things were in the '70s and '80s, just a whole lot. It's just, it's a very educational piece, so much more than it was before, so it was a tremendous, tremendous piece, opportunity, so thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. I have a list for adjournment memory. I'd like to just mention two folks who were lost to the community the last week or so. In Camarillo, Miriam Lithkowitz, 20-year teacher at the Braille Institute, and also served as a long-term care ombudsman, very, very active in the community. And also for Flo Zakrachek, longtime business owner in Santa Paula. Lots of folks knew and loved Flo, very active for years in Santa Paula, through Optimus International Club of Santa Paula and Santa Paula Housing Authority. So submit that list to adjourn in memory. And I know that a few of us here on the dais attended last week the Jean Harris Local Environmental Collection dedication, which was marvelous out at the university, at the John Spore Broom Library. And Jean is known by many of us for her, was her passion and vision for the Ormond Beach, saving Ormond Beach and the restoration project and the dreams for Ormond Beach. So it was, I was, I arrived late, but I was happy to see the collection and very appreciative of the university for doing that. I think it was very meaningful for many. The things are just, sometimes be careful what you wish for in Sacramento. The subcommittees that are up and underway to look at the proposed realignment that the governor's put on the table, and the goal to have decisions made as soon as the first week of March, so that they can draft the ballot measures to go on the ballot in June. And it's significant task force work underway in five different areas that will have great interest to us, certainly those for Health and Human Services and for Public Safety. I'm on weekly calls, Sue Hughes is on weekly calls, and many other staff members here in the county through Human Services and Law Enforcement and others. It's a pretty aggressive calendar. As I say, careful what we wish for. I'm not, I can't tell you today where we're going to end up with this, but it's because the, obviously besides the legislative folks looking at the, how to move the mechanics of the programs and services around to either bring them down to local level with commitment of funds and other changes that are needed. And then the advocates for the different groups that have concerns about what does that mean, so there's, it's just, I'm not going to say chaos, because I think it's organized chaos, so maybe that will make a difference, I'm not sure. But the, one highlight, Senate Subcommittee Number Three on Health and Human Services, this week already adopted a reduction in the Department of Mental Health's cap on administrative costs from 5% down to 3.5%. And they also took action to have 23 new positions that were requested for IHSS, and they rejected them. So they are, they're doing bits and pieces of things in addition to the broader discussion on the policy, turning the big policy ship around, so it's, I'll just keep you updated as much as I can, and I certainly talked with our director at HSA, and to have at the appropriate time, when we all need to, you know, weigh in and make decisions on this, to bring it forward to the board, what the proposals will be. So it's going to be pretty fast. They want it done by March in order to, again, put the language together for a ballot measure in June, and also to, that's the goal the governor's put out there, to get some direction as to what actually will have to go on the ballot in June to, yeah, bring the Services Board. And then in the spirit of Valentine's Day, which will be next Monday, we'll be together after Valentine's Day, remember your sweethearts, Ventura County Animal Services. Valentine's Day finds you true love at the Ventura County Animal Shelter. So they're giving, all dogs and cats will be adopted at the special half price of $60 includes fee as your neutering license, rabies shot, microchip, and free obedience lessons. What a sweet deal. So there's your chance. Go out there and get that beloved one. Get your loved one a loved one. Thank you.
That's what Valentine's Day is all about, is obedience lessons.
For some people, that's correct.
Supervisor Zaragoza, would you like to go next?
Yeah, thank you. Madam Chair, you know, I'd like to adjourn in memory of this folks here, and I'd like to call out Bishop Paul Shorter, Veteran Service Officer, who unexpectedly passed away on Feb. 1. Paul joined the county in 1996 and retired in 2010. He was so devoted to his veterans that after he retired, you know, he went back to work on a part-time basis just to assist, you know, the veterans. And he's, he was well liked, gentlemen, and he's going to be missed. In addition to, that's my adjournment, in addition to that, one of the things that I attended this last weekend, as the Supervisor mentioned, the Jean Harris Special Recognition over at Channel Islands, with all the great things she had done or did for the environment, Ormond Beach, you know, and Oxnard Shores, and the State Park, and numerous other things that she did for the community, so it was a great recognition for her. Additionally, yesterday, I went over to Oxnard High School, you know, and Jack O'Connell was the first recipient of the Hall of Fame at Oxnard High School, and, you know, I'm a yellow jacket graduated 15 years ago, and it was an honor to be there, 200 Jack. No, it was many, many years ago, but it was great to be there with him. In addition, you know, to that, Supervisor Bennett and myself attended the Neighborhood Council meeting for Oxnard Shores and the Oxnard Dunes over at Fisherman's Wharf, and answered quite a few questions on the wharf, and I think it went well, and we explained, you know, what we were doing there and the procedure that we were following or have not followed yet with Fisherman's Wharf. But I think it was a good presentation and a good team effort. And also, one of the other things that I know that Supervisor Foy was sharing how great the kids are over at East County, and I believe that, but if you saw it in Today's Paper, that Oxnard wins again, you know, second in row, the academic decathlon, second in row, and I think the Oxnard has won, that probably has been invited to the state four to five times already, so I just want to share this thank you to the star right in front page. So go Yellow Jackets. Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I call out two of them, Mark Metzner, 32-year employee of Ventura Unified School District, and then James Leland Obolow, and he was a longtime community volunteer in Ojai, and he was honored to go to Washington, DC recently to receive the MetLife Foundation Older Volunteer in Rich America Award. On Thursday, I had an opportunity to attend the Turning Point Foundation Breakfast, and they had over 300 people come and hear a speaker talk about a book that she's written about her life with manic depression. It was really a great moment to remind us how decreasing the stigma associated with mental illness is really one of the valuable things that we all have to do. Also, I had the pleasure on Friday to attend the Transition to Organics Conference at Meditation Mountain, Ojai, and it's a real push in the Ojai Valley to try to have farmers convert over to organic farming and then market that whole valley as produce, et cetera, from there, and create a niche market for them. I think it's a great effort, and it's something that really fits when you're this close to Los Angeles, and it also fits as, becomes more important to create a niche market for your produce as there's more international competition out there for this, et cetera. So it's very helpful. Supervisor Long and myself attended Stare at Christmas Memorial Service on Sunday, and it was at the same time as the Reagan Library Celebration, when Supervisor Foy and Parks were down there. But it was very, for me, it was just very educational to hear all the different ways that she affected those of us in Ventura County with her real passion and commitment for the library, so it was a great movement. There are two other things. One of them deals with our teenagers in the city of Ventura are trying to collect essential items for homeless people. I'm going to read off this list. If you have any of these items, you can bring them to our office, we'll get them, or you can take them to any Ventura High School, that's Blaina-Foothill, or Ventura High School, or you can take them to Ventura City Hall, or up to our office, and that is, these are items that are going to be given to the homeless as they get ready to leave and exit the homeless shelter, the winter warming shelter that we have here in West County. And that's bars of soap, lotion, shampoo, conditioners, toothbrush, toothpaste, combs, brushes, deodorant, nail clippers, hand sanitizers, tissue, Band-Aids, and socks, socks being a real big one. And then, or, and/or you could just donate cash, which would be used to purchase those items for those people. So I congratulate the Teen Voice Program for engaging in that program. And then the final thing is, I'd like to call to attention, it was on the radio this morning, but Florida's Attorney General did an emergency ban of bath salts, the sale of bath salts. And the reason is that unfortunately, people are using them as a legal drug, and it is causing severe reactions amongst the teenagers that have been smoking and inhaling these bath salts. It's an active ingredient there, and it is literally putting lives at risk in Florida. And so the Attorney General did an emergency ban on the sale of it. I would like to try to investigate this and see whether we want to have that same request go to the Attorney General here in California. But they talk about the reactions are tremendously violent on the part of the young people and putting them and the other people around them, so lives at risk, they become really psychotic, and real serious problems. So I'd like to spend some time on that here and see whether that's something that we have to do. It'd be, and it's known, they're selling the product, they're selling the product as, you know, Hurricane Ride, and, you know, they're calling it, you know, this has nothing to do with bath salts, but they're actually selling them in convenience stores in small packets, you know? So it's just, you know, and interesting, the, one of the convenience store owners was talking about how it was a bridgeman of his freedom to sell bath salts, you know? I mean, you know, just another, because he had purchased apparently a couple thousand dollars worth of these packets, not sold for bath salts, I mean, you know, sold to do that and stuff. So anyway, I wanted to get that out there also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So today is the Boy Scouts of America's birthday. They were incorporated on this day in 1910. It also happened- It also happens to be kite-flying day. But I would also add, point out a couple of kudos, one particularly to Dave Fleisch, who just was a Superman last week, particularly helping some of those potholes that were created because of the storms, and it was just amazing how he was able to get his team out there and helping out in our district, and I'm sharing yours too, but my thanks to him for that, and nice to see residents being able to call in and get service, so that was, that was very neat, a good experience. And then on February sixteenth, I'm having one of these quarterly dinners I put on, this one is with Supervisor Zebby Arslavsky, talking about the impact the budget will have on local governments, and we are seeing, we're going to be feeling it a lot here, from impacts on, you know, whether we're going to get that ballot measure through, to the redevelopment agencies potentially being eliminated, as well as handing down a lot of programs to the county and some of the other localities. So that will be an interesting presentation, and it's got a lot of, a lot of people wanting to go, and I think everybody's curious to see what's going to happen, and you know, my big question is, what happens if those ballot, if the ballot, it doesn't get on the ballot, that's a potential, the Republicans don't want that on the ballot, and secondly, if it does get on and it fails, those are going to be some major questions, I think, that we're going to have to look at. I also wanted to point out at the SCAG meeting last week, Southern California Association of Governments, there was some interesting discussion regarding redevelopment, they're all very concerned, a lot of, you know, there's many, many cities in SCAG, and a lot of them do use redevelopment funds for a host of things, not necessarily all that they should be using them for. But one, one city mayor, Brea, brought forward something that I thought was pretty novel, and that is using redevelopment money to help purchase mobile home parks, and have them work with a nonprofit so that people who are being faced with eviction, which we have a lot in Thousand Oaks right now, have an opportunity to work with this nonprofit and own the land underneath it, or be able to continue to rent to the nonprofit instead of potentially losing their home. We're facing a conversion of a mobile home park now to condominiums, another one being rezoned, and another one facing just enormous rent hikes that will also end up people losing their homes. And you're seeing a lot of very low-income seniors that are facing homelessness, so that's one of our key goals in our ten-year plan to end homelessness, is not to see others become homeless, so good option to be able to use redevelopment money for that, I think. Also, VCMC has been ranked the highest for in-hospital breastfeeding in our county, so congratulations to them. We know that baby-friendly hospitals that encourage breastfeeding help both the health of the baby particularly, but also helps, helps the mother to get a nice hormone going, and it helps you in terms of relaxing and being a good mom, so kudos to the hospital. And then I would just ask that we close in honor of the people on this list. Actually, one individual I do want to call out, he was a Marine, a tool and dye maker, a Yankee fan, a Cowboy fan, an avid traveler. Most importantly, he was a husband, father, grandfather, brother-in-law, and uncle. He leaves behind his wife Sylvia fifty-eight years, and George Christopher Pentis also leaves behind Gary Pentis and his wife Janet, and Larry and Lynn Pentis, and Randy and Linda Pentis, and Gail and Jim Wells, and Captain Randy Pentis with our Sheriff's Department, and our Assistant Sheriff Gary Pentis, I know particularly feel the loss, so our heart goes out to them and on their, on their loss. So I'd ask that we close in honor of George Christopher Pentis. And with that, I think that concludes our board comments, and we can go to our first regularly scheduled agenda item, which I believe is item, is it twenty-six? So we'll go to item twenty-six, and Mr. McNamee.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. Mrs. Robinson, I'm Todd McNamee, your Director of Airports. This is our six-year, actually, our six-year capital plan for the two airports, Oxnard and Camarillo. It's more or less rehabilitation and maintenance of the existing facilities, primarily pavement. This is the FAA grant eligible projects. The big projects we have this coming year is a parallel taxiway at Camarillo Airport, and continuing to bring our safety areas into compliance at Oxnard with property and easement purchases. And then in the out-years, in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, reconstruction of the two runways as they're reaching their twenty-year lifespan since they were last reconstructed. I do have a full presentation if you want to see it.
Board, what are you, what is your pleasure? Do you want to see this full presentation?
I believe it was certainly in our packet, and of course Supervisor Zaragosa and I have seen it. It really does keep up what is necessary for the enterprise, and that is to keep maintenance and looking ahead in the infrastructure needs of what are both busy airports. So I think the staff has done an excellent job in trying to stay on track with that and be good, good maintenance and good, good policies with it, so.
And I agree. Todd, you're doing an excellent job, and I like you.
Some answers no.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. If we could all vote. And these, these monies that are funded are not under threat of being lost, it comes from the FAA and...
There's always a threat, as the, as you are well aware, the federal government, and looking back at trying to reduce back to two thousand eight or even two thousand six spending goals, but we're in relatively good position with the FAA and feel confident that we'll see not only our entitlement funds, but also the discretionary money that we need to accomplish these projects.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
And now we'll go to our Healthcare Agency, and this is regarding our WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Thank you again for the comments on our realignment. That is really important for health and also baby-friendly, because that's so related to WIC. We do a lot for breastfeeding. What I have before you is request to ratify our contract with WIC on the approval of it. We had an increase of caseload in two thousand and nine, and our WIC program immediately exceeded that caseload. So again, in two thousand and ten, State Book asked us to increase our caseload. So with this, we're asking to accept that increase of caseload plus also one-time funds to allow us to have infrastructure to meet this new caseload.
The one-time funds is specific to infrastructure, because my question would be, you know, if we are getting one-time funds, why are we using regular positions instead of temporary positions?
That's a good question. This is a two-part contract approval, because it's also, one-time funds is part of it. The other part is allowing us to have ongoing funds to meet the caseload. So it's kind of like a two-part approval to do this.
Okay, so the, you will have ongoing funds?
Yes.
For the positions that are going to be regular?
Yes, we will.
Okay, good. Supervisor Foy?
Where are those funds going to come from?
Comes from the federal government through the state to us. It's federal WIC program.
So you don't believe that there's a chance that money could be cut with all the stuff we're dealing with?
Um, we...
Because I have no, I have no problem doing this. I'd rather have you put these into a fixed term instead of, because it's a lot easier for us to deal with that later if something happens.
We have plans as far as to addressing it. Right now, for the state, the money comes directly from the federal government, and it's a well-supported program at the federal government, but we respect, yeah, we're well aware of the need of, if the position, if the money goes away, what we're to do with it.
Yeah, because a fixed term is pretty easy, but this makes it very difficult when you're talking five more people or something.
Um, four more positions. We're reducing one position, too. We're modifying it to be a little bit more efficient with our operations.
So is there a way to turn these into a fixed term versus these just full-time?
Um, we... It would be at a discretion, but I still, I think that would be open to discussion just in the fact that if they have, you're convinced you've got the regular funding for the regular employees, I don't know if the need is fixed.
Well, the problem is, they all think, like Todd said, that things can go away pretty easily too, so.
Any other comments on the board? Okay. Well, thank you. And I see that these are also going to be able to fill some of the spots out in the new facilities, an expanded facility in Simi and out in Thousand Oaks also.
Yes, we've been requiring, we've outgrown our facilities the last five years, so in Thousand Oaks, we've greatly outgrown our capacity, so we're allowing this money to move into our new facility, same thing in Simi Valley, and we were able to expand into a new location in Oxnard also.
Thank you. And we have a motion by Supervisor Long and a second by Supervisor Zaragosa. If we could all vote.
I like the program, but I'm just not going to vote because of the fixed, I'd rather fixed terms, so.
That's fine, thank you.
And just send them to Thousand Oaks. Our next item then is with the General Services Agency, and this is regarding the Ojai Valley Trail. Good morning, Mr. Grossfeld.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. I'm Paul Grossfeld, Director of the General Services Agency. The item before you is a request for your approval of a bridge project over the San Antonio Creek Crossing on the Ojai Valley Trail. This item was, the MND for this, for this project was approved by your board in November of two thousand nine. This, excuse me, the circumstances that are driving this project is an issue that arises fairly routinely in that area, in that the trail, this is a weak point in the trail. It drops down essentially to creek level. It washes out just about every year, and it also is a, is a choke point for the, for the fish passage, because the culverts, the existing culverts get clogged with debris. This is a project that has been, or an issue that has been looked at by the Parks Department for some years on how to, how to fix this situation. And finally, we went to an analysis of alternatives, water, County Watershed Protection District was involved, regulatory agencies, several engineering firms, and alternatives from status quo and sort of building up the existing trail all the way to the bridge project, which is before you today, have been analyzed, and the bridge project, which is, as you can see in your board packet, takes the crossing over the one-hundred-year floodplain and clears the passage below, is the one that is being recommended. The, also in your packet is a detailed status of the funding. We have roughly one point three million dollars approved in, either in grants or in insurance payouts for previous damage that can be applied to this project. The overall cost of the project is roughly one point eight million dollars, that includes a fifteen percent contingency. So the worst-case shortfall, as we see it, is about five hundred thousand dollars. There's roughly four hundred-plus thousand dollars that remain pending in grants. We won't find out about those until, until late in this year, early next year. So the, our dilemma is, we need to move forward in order to not to lose the, the grant funding we already have approved, but we have to do so without knowing what is going to happen with the grants that we, that we have pending. So that's the, that's the project. Invite your questions at this point.
Supervisor Foy?
It looks like a pretty good project. The, what is your, what do you think your chances are picking up that four hundred thousand? Seems like you've done a pretty good job so far.
You know, at the Park, Parks Department has been turning over lots of rocks, as you can see. Literally, we have, oh, I don't know, there's probably seven or eight different grant sources that we have. We've had several not awarded. It looks like three that were requested and not awarded, and it's hard to, it's just hard to predict on what our chances are.
Once we start the construction and do this, do we lose the opportunity for those grants to come?
No.
If it's completed?
No, we do not.
Oh, we don't?
No.
So we can keep turning some more rocks?
Right.
I mean, eighty thousand dollars to finish up sounds, we're spending one hundred and sixty thousand dollars over the last ten years, we're spending money on a regular basis anyway. It's just tough if five hundred thousand didn't hit us right now, because it'd be general fund, you don't have any money in your parks, right?
That's correct, but I, but I, your board needs to be aware that the worst case is we don't get any of those pending grants, and we're on the hook for the, for the remaining amount. So that's, that's where we are today.
Yeah, yeah. So she just said a toll, but is that a work? A lot of hikers there?
Works for me. I think Mr. Berg would be happy to pay that. He's a regular user.
Would you, would you mind pulling the two microphones a little closer together? I think we'll hear all the speakers after you a little bit better. I don't have a question, we've had a number of conversations about this, I just want to compliment the Parks Department. Number one, they've gone out and gotten one point three million dollars worth of grants, and the idea, I mean, the, the idea that we would let that slip, you know, because we, because of the possibility that we may not get the others and we wouldn't come up, I think that's not the good government decision here. I think the good government decision is to hang on to all that grant money that we have, do everything we can to try to get those other grants and go from there. So I just, I do want to compliment Mr. Grossfeld for bringing this to our attention before we started losing the funding for those other grants. Overall, I think the Parks Department has appropriately recognized the real value of making this connection, and that's part of why they pushed it so, so well, so thank you very much. If there aren't any other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Yeah, just a, this question is to the, the product used for the bridge in San Rosa Park, that material that's being used.
The San Rosa Valley has that recycled plastic, that M1 tanks can go over.
Right, we did look at that. The ones we saw are a very short span. This is a multiple hundred, hundred-foot bridge, and in order to look at something like that, I think it would, the redesign cost would take us back, I think our timeline risk would, would become untenable at that point. I think for shorter runs, I'm aware of that bridge, and for future projects where we have a shorter span, I think we can look at things like that, but this particular one, and, and we've talked about it in-house, it's, it just doesn't seem applicable in this, in this particular project.
When we, when we approved it for the San Rosa Bridge, I asked GSA to take a look at it, and they did, so they did vet it, but it just can't make it work.
Yeah, there was a nice article in some parts of the county about that bridge, and unfortunately it didn't make it to the East County, but it is remarkable that we do have that material available to us. You never know. So we have a motion, Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
And a second?
And I think you said this is your number-one project on your list.
It is, which is interesting, because the trail is not a revenue generator, but it's such an important asset for our, it's a regional asset for our county, and the Parks Department has stewardship over that, so I think looking at it objectively, that's, that is the most important project we have on the books right now.
And it'll make it safer, too, cyclists don't have to get off it and go on the road, that's more...
Exactly. Highway thirty-three just is not set up for cyclists.
So if we could all vote, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Good luck. And then we'll go on to item thirty. This is the water rate, famous water rate increase out in Moore Park area. Mr. Pacala, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson. Ready, Pacala, with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. I have a presentation, about fifteen slides. I'd like to go through this, and I'd be happy to take questions as I'm going through this presentation, so at the end of my presentation. This is water rate review process I have identified for you when we started initial process back in September, and typically for every water district, it takes about three to four months for us to go through the process, bring it to your board for review and approval. Of course, because of the issues that have come up in Waterworks District One, it's almost double the time it's taking for us to go through the same process. I also want to make a mention of the Advisory Committee, and as you know, the Advisory Committee is very involved in this process. I just wanted to publicly thank them for... I just wanted to publicly thank them for coming to the special meetings. Every time we request for special meeting, other meetings, they come out to the meetings, and these are the members, they're business people, they're also community leaders. The committee members we have on this District One are ex-city council members, the president of Chamber, president of Kiwanis Club, president of Rotary Club, Farm Bureau, we have a big array of experienced people who help us to guide us through this process. And also from staff's perspective, we provide them regular updates, financial updates, we go through line-by-line items with them on a regular basis, we even share with them the challenges faced in the operations of the system. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for giving this time to help us to review the process before we bring it to your board. Now, this is where we are today, after your board discusses this scenarios based on what you direct staff, then we will be sending Proposition 218 notices to our ratepayers, and then we'll schedule a public hearing sometime in April based on when we send the notice out. This is just a summary of what you have seen before, except I just wanted to point out to you that our fiscal year budgets are for, our budgets of the fiscal year, which ends in June of every year, however, our water rates are for calendar year. I just want to make a point, point that out, because there's a difference between how you look at the rates, how much revenue you're generating this fiscal year, next fiscal year, there's a lot of analysis that goes into it. The reason we do the water rates for calendar year is because of what imported water rates are, increased every January of the calendar year. So the process starts with Metropolitan, as you have heard before, then goes to Cuyegus, then sometime in August, we are aware of this process, that's when we begin our process. Well, these are the goals, you have heard me talk about this before, I'm not going to spend much time. What are the challenges today? The balancing FY11 budget. Without a rate increase, we will be in a negative fund balance by end of this fiscal year. So that's why it's important for us to get a direction from your board today so we can move forward with our rate review process. And what should be the rate increase, and I'll be talking about those scenarios with you today.
I hate, I'm sorry to interrupt, but as hard as you've been working, your graphics have really improved dramatically. Pretty eye-catching.
Thank you.
Must be those late nights, huh?
Well, it's my staff in Moore Park, they're the ones who come up with all these creative ideas. Okay, this proposal I put out there just to show you where we were back in December of last year. This is not a proposal in front of you, or our recommendation or scenario, but I just want to show you where we were when we first looked at the 10% rate increase. That's what Advisory Committee recommended, that we recommended to you. What I wanted to point out to you on this is about the fund balance. We used to call it rate stabilization fund, that's the fund that we have set aside for the last 20 years from the incremental revenues in Tier Two, Tier Three, charges that are to be collected from the customers, that rate stabilization has depleted over the years. This is the first time that fund balance has come down below $1 million. We, at that time in December, we believed $600,000 is appropriate fund balance, because of the some operational changes we made, for example, we were billing bimonthly until this year, we converted to monthly billing, what that helps us with the cash flow. The cash flow would be like, Cuyegus, we have to pay our bills as we are collecting money from our customers, it helps us to pay our cash flow purposes, and also it helps us with any contingencies. This is really where the contingency is for operation maintenance, we don't have any other contingents for the operation maintenance portion of it. So that's where, that $600,000, and other big variable, any water rate setting, is the weather condition. When we first look at the budgets, we see whatever weather would be next year, so based on that, we expect to sell so much water. But if it changes, then the number, this fund will be used to offset some of the variations in the weather that we budget for the water rates.
What is the percentage as your fund balance to the full, to your budget?
That's $14 million is our annual O&M budget, so that's less than what?
Close to.
Close to 2%? No, no, it's about 1.4% here.
Thank you.
And these are the scenarios I'll be talking to you about, and under this scenario A, we are only looking at increasing the Tier One rate. There's no proposal to adjust the tiers under scenario A. What scenario A is looking at is, what would be the rate if there's a zero fund balance this fiscal year, and what would be the rate if there's a $600,000 fund balance for this, end of this fiscal year, which is only about four months away, that will be June of this year. And Advisory Committee, when we presented to them in the special meeting, they felt for this year, we might be able to deplete the reserves with the understanding that they're going to be brought back up next fiscal year because of the long process, because of the challenges we are facing, that may be something that could be considered.
Madam Chair, Ready, just for my information on the last scenario you had there, go back one, right there. In 12, fiscal year 12, at 7.5%, we replenish the reserves by 885,000?
Yes, sir. It'll come back to 885.
So if we use a 661,000 this year, that's what they want to, that's what they want to do?
Right.
But if we approve that, then next year, it'll be 7.1 plus, the reserves go up to 885?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And again, what I want to point out, these projections FY12 through 15 are based on our assumptions. The assumptions are what the imported water costs are, what the Edison power costs are, how the system is doing, if there's a big challenge in the system. So to me, these are just to give you an idea where we might end up in the future years. When I talk to Advisory Committee, I say, really, you're looking at FY11, whatever the fiscal year is, the firm numbers, beyond that, there are just the projections for you to have a better understanding of where we might end up.
Supervisor Dunnitt?
While you're interrupted, Ready, could you go to the next slide?
Oh, next, the other one?
Yeah, the one that you were just, well, the slide, this slide right here. Is there a reason why you have dollar signs in front of the 20?
That's a typo.
Huh?
That's a typo. There's no reason for it.
And if they're, if they're suggesting to allow to deplete the fund balance, that's also used to be called the rate stabilization, and if you find that there is going to be a good jump that comes down, they're going to have a bigger jump?
Correct, correct, yeah. The rate stabilization fund we had, has been used to offset the imported water costs until this year. Beginning next year, there will not be sufficient funding to offset the imported water costs unless we start increasing this fund balance in the future years. What we are thinking right now is, for this particular year, it may be okay, we will be able to manage with the minimal fund balance because of the things I said before, we changed from bimonthly to monthly billing, and also some of the wells, we are fixing them this year, so I think we can manage with minimal fund balance at what level we want to be, we can discuss that. And also, once rates are increased, then you are replenishing it back again, so it'll come back from July, every month, we're going to put some money aside into this fund balances. So for, yes, sir.
But we, haven't we lost about three months already of revenue?
Yes, sir. That's the reason why we need a larger rate increases now than before.
Because we're getting.
Yes, yes, sir. We actually, we'll be losing four months by the time we get to the rate.
Because of the 220?
Prove up to 18 and require.
Yeah, 18, yeah. Two other questions, Ready?
Yes, sir.
So are we changing the name from rate stabilization fund to fund balance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That seems much more appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Because you're using it for everything, for all kinds of contingencies.
Correct, yes, sir.
And so there's some risk, because this is an enterprise fund, there's some risk at getting that fund balance too low, but you feel fairly confident in that, so the risk is between now and July?
Between now and end of summer, I would say.
Okay.
End of summer.
And then at the, so if, and then, then the rate increases will start to kick in, will start to replenish?
Yes, sir.
So what do we do if we have a problem in June, and you need an extra $200,000 or something?
Well, when you say problems, if a lightning were to strike and a well were to go down, then I have to come back to your board to borrow money to do that and then replenish it back.
So if a pipe breaks or something, we'll have to fund that out of a general fund, for example, because we can't borrow it from other zones, right?
Well, no, you have money in your.
Yeah, we do have money for the capital replacement reserves, I'll come to you and request for using that on a short-term basis so we can replenish it back.
Because he has $8 million or something in his other funds.
The 22, it is confusing seeing the dollar sign there. The suggestion for fiscal year 2011 is if we raise the rate by 22%, that would have a zero fund balance. If we try to replenish it partially, it would require a 41% rate increase?
Right. If we want to keep the fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, we see June, end of June, with $600,000 fund balance, we need to go to 41% rate increase.
That's because you only get two months to redo it.
Exactly.
Because remember, it doesn't go all the way to December like the rate does, it has to be funded by June 30th.
And that's because we didn't raise it 10% in December?
In June, in January, correct.
In January, we didn't raise it 10%, so now we're looking at 22% increase or 41%?
No, 41, 41. If you were to compare to that 10%, that'll be 41%. But what I also want to point out is, the following years, if you look at, no rate increase for the next four years. That's because your rate is so high here, 0% for the next four years. Here it's 22, rate increase is less than 5%, 2% and 5%.
That, by doing the 41, that also means you're going from $600,000 to 2.2 million and up to 2.9 million in that fund.
Correct.
So you're paying a whole lot of money to bring it back up to millions of dollars.
Right.
So you can see where that, you know, gradually taking it over the years, is this the way to go instead of trying to do it all at once?
Yes.
And that's why you had the balance to begin with, you've been taking it a little bit over the years.
Correct. Scenario B, this includes increasing Tier One rate and also adjusting the tiered allocation. I will go into more details about how the tiered allocations are done, but what you see here on B1, B2, B3, under B1, we are looking at keeping a minimal fund balance, I showed 36, I was trying to keep it a round number there, 12%. So if you were to go with B1, that means we were, we are looking at 12% rate increase for Tier One, we're also looking at adjusting the tiers from peak demand periods to low demand period, which I'll explain to you later. If that were the preferred option, then you can see the following years and how the fund balance changes over a period of time. B2 is if you want to keep a $600,000 fund balance at the end of this current fiscal year, then you will be looking at 28.6% and following three years, 0% rate increases. And B3 finally, this is 19.9%. The reason I put this out there is, if we were to assume a rate increase would be approved in April of this year, we have to begin our rate setting process for the calendar year 2012 in September, October. That means our ratepayers will be seeing a second rate increase within 12 months, maybe 10 months after this rate increase goes. So for some reason, if there's a desire not to increase the rates for the following year, which would be FY12, B3 could be looked into that as an option, and under this scenario, the next rate increase that our ratepayers would see would be calendar year 2013, if this is something that we want to pursue. I also want to point out, the impact of reducing the allocations would impact only six months in a year. I'll go to the next slide and explain that to you. At this time, our allocations are for peak demand and low demand periods. The peak demands are between May and October. At that time, we have a three-quarter inch meter, 21 units. Low demand period, we have 14 units. On the right side, you see proposed year-round. I want to correct on that sheet, the proposed, it's not a proposed water rate. Proposed water rate should be whatever your board wants us to come back with, that's the proposed water rate, however, this should be looked at just for the allocation purposes only. If we were to do that, for those customers who stay within the Tier One rate, they would only see the Tier One allocation. For those customers who want, who want to use more water, they'll be paying at a higher rate in Tier Two and Tier Three maybe, depending on how much water they use. So this will give an option to our customers to use more water, and also I think this will help us to help our customers maybe change their behaviors of the outdoor water usage, so that they can change their habits. This is a financial descent centers for the customers to change the outdoor water usage.
Ready, let me, this goes back to the philosophy of, first of all, we have, what, 50% of the people in the district stay within this tier already, right?
Right.
So they're not going to be hit the other way with the bigger rate increases, but it helps them long-term if they stay within that tier. And also what you've told us, this tier of 14 HCS is higher than most other tiers.
I'm going to get to that, yes.
Okay.
But I said the 50% suppose are, boy, that's current tiered allocation.
Right, yes.
But that will change, once this is implemented, there'll be more people going into Tier Two, Tier Two than before, unless they change their behavior, reduce their water usage.
But it goes back to our conservation, they've been trying to push, being creative and trying to move conservation.
This is a district allocation based on the meter size. Here is a survey that you're referring to. We did a survey of major water purveyors within Ventura County, and we looked at what are the Tier One allocations, Tier One rates, and I'll give you a summary. Here is a summary of those, that survey. Purveyors have Tier One allocations between 0 to 3 units, some of them have. The highest is 0 to 18 in the Tier One allocation. If you take the average of these 10 purveyors who have tiered rate structures, nine units within Tier One. What we are proposing is, District One allocations change to 14 year-round. It will be higher than the average, 14 units will give sufficient water for indoor water usage and some exterior water usage for the landscaping, but not as much.
Ready, when you had the list of all the different water purveyors and the different costs, they're all getting Cuyegus water from MWD, is that right? So the difference, the reason why their costs are so different, the charges that they charge, is it basically O&M?
No, not all of the purveyors are getting Cuyegus water. There are purveyors who have the local groundwater also, and there are, I can go through the list.
But I'm just wondering, when you do have apples to apples and the rates are different, what accounts for that in general?
Well, if you're talking about the rates, it accounts for water supply costs and the water infrastructure. Those are the two main components, what really accounts for the rates.
And could you go back to that list of?
Purveyors?
Yeah, purveyors.
It's not coming up.
So like Thousand Oaks is the highest cost per water, do you think it's because they're taking more money for their infrastructure needs, for example, it's not just O&M?
They have higher imported water, because they're 100% imported, their water cost portion of the budget is higher, and also they have system replacement included in their rates, and also the other costs that go with it.
They have no groundwater they can take, it's cheaper.
Correct, yes, sir.
Just kind of a difference between the West and East County?
You would think people importing water would, should have lower Tier Ones, you know, to try to keep it down, that's interesting.
And Ready?
Oak Park is at 6.
Ready, and in Oxnard, you have what, groundwater, United, and Cuyegus, right?
Right, and for example, Oxnard has 0 to 6 in their Tier One, and City of Ventura has, I believe, 1 to 8.
And Oak Park, which is certainly a community that's similar to Moore Park, is at less than 50% in their Tier One.
By this option, he's been very creative to try to figure out through the association, kind of found a way to move that conservation and keep those people still, that's why I think 50% of people can stay within Tier One already, yeah.
And there's an equity issue too. And there's an equity issue too.
So this goes back to the tiered allocations. If this is what we want to move forward with, I do want to make mention of reduction in allocation would be almost thirty-three percent. When you go from twenty-one to fourteen, that's a thirty-three percent reduction in the allocation only for six months. So majority of the customers will be impacted for the six months in a year. Other six months during the low-demand periods, there will not be any impact to those, they will get the same amount of water they have been getting in the past. And we also looked into even adjusting fourteen to a lower number or higher number, that what we thought, if you increase it to a higher number than fourteen, that means you are relaxing on your water conservation goals. We thought that's not a good way to go. That's the reason we kept it fourteen. If we keep it lower, there's not going to be much impact in the allocation initially. Maybe in the future, we could look into that, but we thought this may be the best option at this time.
So it'll be more expensive to use water in the summer, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It'll be more expensive. It could be, because we are reducing the allocation by thirty-three percent in tier one, some customers who do not reduce water use may see as much as thirty percent increase in a monthly bill if they're not reducing their water usage. But those who reduce the water usage, they won't see that increase.
After you get your first bill, now you've gone monthly, you'll start thinking twice, huh?
Twelve months, and I'm expecting we'll get more phone calls from our ratepayers.
You will have a lot of upset people.
You will.
It's a lot easier to ration yourself during the wet weather than we're doing just the opposite, which is going to make it, I think, incredibly difficult.
Right. Our experience in the past is when we send a forty-five-day notice, usually we don't hear from the customers. When they start getting the bills, that's when we get, we get calls from our ratepayers. Well, this is a summary of different scenarios, and also, I still put the original proposal up there. Again, that was what was discussed in the past, that's not on the table today because that will not work with our objectives of keeping a positive fund balance. So with that, I'll be happy to take further questions and seek your direction.
And I don't have any comment cards. Did you have any, Roberta, for us?
Yeah.
No public comment cards on this. And the, your advisory committee is recommending...
Well, they would like to see lower rate increase than higher rate increase. They would also like to see depleted reserve just for this year. They understand we have to build it back up again. And from staff's perspective, on a short-term basis, we think we can manage it just for a few months until the new rate kicks in and build a result.
I'm guessing from an equity point of view, that all the other districts did see their rates increased to continue their O and M and to, for this one district, we're going to deplete it so you don't have that rate increase. I just don't know how equitable that is with the other districts.
Well, again, it's just a short-term basis. It's only several months. The reason we are here is the long process we have gone through, that there's this difference between other districts, other districts, so your board has approved the rate increases, but this one, we have to have a longer rate process because the place where we are in, from the staff perspective, we can limp along for a few months.
Because we're not, we're not doing the whole year. We're only going until June thirtieth, right? And then it builds back up.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, there was a whole confusion, this whole meeting, because of fiscal year versus calendar year was really a, you know, real, real difficult to understand.
Yes.
Because we've got to make up something. And then after that, this, this thing starts to climb back to your six or whatever...
Yes, sir.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And it's not O and M, it's the fund balance. O and M is operations and, you know, the overhead, but...
Correct.
Yeah, that's different. You already have reserves for all that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you're, you're, in case you need to break a pipe or those kind of things, that was the key. But looking at this, this has been a real education, and I think for the advisory committee and Ready and Jeff was there in this last one, and it was looking at this and then trying to come up with that, a way that fifty percent of the people are staying within the tier, doing everything they've been asked for, for, you know, even during the summer months too, right? And so that was the key, is then if our, our board has been saying, let's try to find some way to encourage conservation, I think this is the way you and the advisory board have found a way to say, okay, we have conservation, it moves those people in that tier. We have a high tier to start with, we're not low like Subirza Bennett said, down at summer six and whatever. And so you do have the ability to then start to pay attention to where my water is, because during the summers, when we really want people to start conserving, right?
Yes, sir.
And you need that, that opportunity to conserve. It's easy to conserve in the winter times, right? So to me, I mean, I look at that and say that the twelve percent and the eight-point-nine projected, we understand those are projections...
Yes, sir.
Overall, have done that, but we've also built something there. I see City of Moore Park also went through a whole thing, they just approved something else that all their future building and all their future park or whatever, parkways and everything else are...
What they have approved is water conservation measures for the new growth. If a, if a new growth were to come in today, they want the new growths to make sure the irrigation system is designed properly, the soils are prepared properly, and the sprinkler systems are installed properly.
Yeah, even automatic shut-off.
Automatic shut-off if it rains. And that's a state law that all the jurisdictions are required to comply, and we're happy to see that Moore Park City Council approved that last Wednesday on February second. And this will go along the same lines that we are encouraging water conservation for the existing customers...
Yes.
Who have been using water. And for the new customers, Moore Park City Council, new ordinance will kick in.
Right. Well, I appreciate them willing to take some real hard measures, yeah.
Subirza Foy, are you recommending a scenario B one?
Yeah, B one. B one would be the scenario I would, brings that down almost to that zero in the, whatever call fund you call it, yes. Recommendation.
Just a question, so would B one, all of these would include that tier adjustment?
Yes.
All of them?
All the B options, B option, B one, B two, B three includes a tier adjustment. A one, A one, A one, A two does not.
Okay.
That would be my motion to accept Ready's B one motion there.
I'll second that.
And...
Spirit of cooperation.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, thank you. And Ready, I do appreciate you and the advisory board and Jeff and all you've went through. I mean, this has been, I've been hearing people the most education and seeing what you brought here to the board, and this, I, to me, has been a tremendous education and where we're going and the issues that we all face, you know, environmentally, infrastructure, I mean, it's, it's really tough. And these are, and what you've come up with here is, I think City of Moore Park has come up with the same thing, is, okay, how do we encourage? We've heard about this encouraging of conservation, so now you have some options. And I hope that when we see the other districts coming up, that maybe there's some new options that you, you can look at some of those, those things, and maybe other people have the option to, to do. Because like I said, it's going to be a tough fight. I think there's other ways to bring water, but we know it's going to be a fight, and we're going to deal with what we've got to deal with right here. So I appreciate it, thank you.
I, I am happy to second the motion. I have two, two things. One is just a clarification, and we have these projected rates out there, those are just projected, we don't know for sure what that will be until we know what water consumption is.
Yes, sir.
And, and my second, I, I guess I want to express it as a concern. These are based on us projecting what the water use is going to be, but as water rates go up, we may find that conservation may kick in a little harder, and we may find ourselves not having the revenue that we thought. And if that's the case, with the reduced fund balance, we don't have much margin for error there. But I guess that's a problem that you feel is manageable, that we would have to, we'd have to watch.
On a short-term basis.
Right, okay, great.
I had the news, a newspaper reporter ask, well, you've approved not raising the ten percent in Moore Park, why are you supporting the ten percent in Lake Sherwood? And I said I wanted, I didn't want to use Sherwood as an experiment, and we've already got one. And I think for me, the moral is, is that the delay did actually increase the rate to twelve percent, and it also left us, or left that district a little bit in a risk situation in terms of not having that, that fund balance. I, I, it was a good, I guess, education, as you said, but I think we've learned something.
Well, I think overall, if you take the four months, it's, it's an average, it's an eight percent, eight-point-two percent rate increase is the district. But at the other side is, I think that what it did do is it brought us to a way of figuring out how we can do some long-term things to help control some of this cost. And the, like I said, the education, fifty percent of the people themselves stay within that tier that really focus to hear that they work hard to stay within that tier. And so, and the, but they were getting an increase because of the big users too, so, but I appreciate that.
And I want to thank you too, because that's an equity issue too, you know? So the people that use more water pay more for it too. One of the things that I want to share too is that this district and other districts are all facing this water conservation increases, including the cities too.
Yes, sir.
So we're, this district one is not alone, you know, we're all involved in this water conservation process.
Yes, sir.
I have two other things that I wanted to try to finish up on. And one is, we specifically asked that when you come back with a tier increase, you identify for us what that rate increase, what that commensurate rate increase would be. I don't actually see that anywhere here, but we have a tier increase built into this B, all the B scenarios. So for, if we adopt B one, what, what is that tier increase if we...
Okay. If we were to compare B one, I'm sorry, B, yeah, B one to the original proposal, which was ten percent. The revenues that would have been created, generated under original proposal of ten percent were estimated to be one-point-one million dollars total, that's for the calendar year. Then for B one, the estimated cost, revenues would be one-point-four million dollars generated through the twelve-month period. Within that revenue projection, the challenge is what happens within the first six months this fiscal year? We'll be collecting less money in FY eleven compared to the original proposal of ten percent rate increase.
Say it again, say it again.
We will be collecting less revenue in FY eleven, which would be, just for two months we are collecting, compared to the original proposal of six months. We'll be collecting more in the following six months. So this B one would generate on a twelve-month basis, a little bit more than ten percent. That's because we had to pay, we didn't pay the, for the first four months, that's the reason why. So they both are really equal as far as the overall generation of revenues. The other options, every one of them will generate much more revenue than the original proposal versus B one. That's, that's how they would work out.
Okay. I guess there's another way to say it. Everybody's going to get a twelve percent rate increase with this proposal.
Correct.
Some people are going to pay much more than a twelve percent rate increase.
Yes.
And that's the people who this summer use more than fourteen acre feet.
Fourteen hundred cubic feet.
Yeah, fourteen hundred cubic feet, you know, they go over the fourteen, right?
Right.
Those people are going to have a more substantial increase.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Those people may have as much as thirty percent increase if they don't reduce the water usage.
Okay, so the best, probably the best we can get you to say is, everybody's going to get a twelve percent increase.
Yes.
Some people will get between a twelve and a thirty percent increase this summer...
Yes, sir.
Depending on how much water they use over the fourteen.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. I think that's, that's, Jeff, you got a different way to say it?
No, I don't. My answer would have been much simpler. Jeff, Public Works, Forestry Board, Super...
I'll take the, I'll take the simpler answer.
We didn't do the calculation, and that's because I, I think we missed it, and I know that it will be a difficult calculation, it'll be based on projections of usage, but we can get back to your board with that.
Okay, do you remember us specifically asking for it?
I don't, but I'm sure you did. We went through so many scenarios that, that we probably dropped it somewhere.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll get back to you with that number in, in the email.
We did have a motion and a second, I don't think we've had the chance to vote yet.
Again, thanks a lot, Ready and Jeff, for all the hard work.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your committee too, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a couple of minutes before our ten a.m., so we'll take a quick break and be back here at ten.
We'll wait a second.
We'll come back from our little recess, back to our February 8th Board of Supervisors meeting. Yes. Okay. Exactly. And our first 10:00 AM time certain is item number 18. This is a presentation of a resolution that Supervisor Bennett will be doing, so I'll pass it on to him.
Well, this is a delight to have a few-minute break from the rigors of governing and water rates, to be able to do this celebration of Evan Jackson's remarkable accomplishment. I'm going to do this, I'm going to pass this picture around. This is the hard copy of the picture, and it's also up on the screen. I'm going to let you take a look at it. But this is the picture that Evan submitted, and I will try to preserve the story by not talking any more about it and just reading the resolution off here before we come down and go to the next part of this celebration. But this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors congratulating Evan Jackson, winner of the National Geographic Society and Tourism Toronto International Photography Contest for Kids. Whereas while on family trips, Evan Jackson enjoys taking pictures of anything he finds interesting. In 2009, during a family trip to Costa Rica, Evan went on a walk looking for frogs. He came across a colorful toad in the middle of a rainstorm swimming in a pool, and using one of his father's old cameras, he took a picture of it. And a year later, the summer of 2010, while visiting his grandparents, Evan, who, by my point out, are here in the audience, the whole, we've got the Jackson extended clan here. A year later, while visiting his grandparents, Evan was going through a National Geographic magazine and came across an advertisement for a contest, the International Photography Contest for Kids, sponsored by the National Geographic Society and Tourism Toronto. And whereas Evan decided to enter the contest, and along with his family, decided the photo of the toad he had taken a year earlier, that rainy night in Costa Rica, was one of the better pictures of the whole trip. The contest was open to kids, 9 to 14 years old. There were four categories: animals, scenery, people, and humor. For each category, there was one first prize winner. Then, one grand prize winner was selected from among the first prize winners. On December 1st, Evan received an email from the managing editor of the National Geographic Kids Magazine that said, "Congratulations, you've won the grand prize for the United States Canadian International Photography Contest for Kids. This also means you've won the first-place prize in the animals category. Congratulations again." And for his first-place prize, Evan won a 12.1 megapixel digital camera, a 4-gigabyte memory card, a copy of National Geographic Kids Almanacs, Weird But True, and the Big Book of Fun. For his grand prize, Evan won a trip to Toronto, Canada, for himself, his brother Ryan, and his parents Jim and Susan. And his grandparents are lobbying Jim and Susan to stay home, so that they can go on the trip instead. Evan's winning entries now entered in the Worldwide National Geographic Society International Photography Contest for Kids, in which the first-place winners from this contest and other National Geographic Society local contests being conducted in other countries around the world will compete. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in congratulating Evan Jackson's first prize and grand prize winner of the National Geographic Society and Tourism Toronto International Photography Contest for Kids. That's quite a title, right? And we wish him the best of luck in the Worldwide National Geographic Society International Photography Contest for Kids competition. And in all of his future endeavors, I would be remiss if I didn't say, we have some remarkable parents here that are giving these two young men some tremendous opportunities. In Costa Rica, we heard about their trip to Palau, where they kayaked from island to island a year ago. But they are, they're knocking themselves out to give these young men some great opportunities, and the young men are responding by really taking advantage of them, and it's a real treat. So, now, we have the great pleasure, I get to come down and actually present the resolution, but we have the, Anna on my staff has to take a picture of somebody who is a international or a national grand prize winner. It better be a good picture, Anna, all right, that comes out of there.
Roberta, can we also get that on television? You know, if we can have the people upstairs put that photo up, too.
Well, the first thing we want to do is present you with this resolution, right? And the second thing is, give you an opportunity to tell us anything else that was not mentioned in here about taking the picture, or anything you're looking forward to in terms of your trip to Toronto. You want to try your hand at that?
Well, I really want to go to Niagara Falls, because we get to go in the falls on a boat, which I really want to do. And the Worldwide was already found out, and I got top 10.
You did?
Yeah. All right, good. Jim and Susan, would you like to come up? And Ryan also? And is there anything you'd like to say? Sage words of advice about parenting, perhaps?
Always give your kid a camera. I guess on vacation, you never know what you're going to find. We're just, we're real proud of both boys. We appreciate the invitation here today and the commendation, and we appreciate your time.
And I would just say that Jim had the great idea, when we went to Costa Rica, that on all these little tours of rainforests and things, each boy had a camera in his hand. So, while we were listening and looking for creatures in the trees, they were just pointing and shooting the whole time, and it was a great idea.
Brian?
I'm just really excited to go to Toronto.
And kudos to the grandparents for their National Geographic subscription that you had, and that you also looked it up by yourself and found out. That's pretty cool.
Evan, if you'll bring your resolution, we take our picture over here. If you want to come on, heck, we can take it right here. It's really cool.
Thank you, Supervisor Bennett, for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
And our next item is item number 19, and this is a resolution Supervisor Zaragoza's going to do. So, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's going to be a hard act to follow, and I want to thank Evan Jackson for the beautiful photo there. But we have today with us United Way, Food Share, Interface, and First 5, and I'd like to read this resolution for the Board of Supervisors, recognizing the week of February 7th, 2011, as 2-1-1 Week. And we'll invite Dave and the rest of the folks up here to the, and I'll read this, and I'll go down and hand you this resolution. Yes, as whereas 2-1-1 is an easy-to-remember number that connects individuals' health, human services, resources with Ventura County. With approximately 3,200 nonprofit organizations in our county, plus scores of governmental agencies, finding help can be very confusing and intimidating to our residents. Ventura County 2-1-1 call center is staffed with trained specialists who quickly assess the caller's needs and refer them where they can seek help. 2-1-1 makes the entire network of health and human services function more efficiently by reducing the number of misdirected calls and reducing public frustration with the difficulties of finding help. Whereas 2-1-1 offers information on the broad ranges of services, including earned income tax credit, rental assistance, mortgage loan assistance, food bank assistance, health resources, childcare, and after-school programs, elderly care, financial literacy, and job training programs. Whereas 2-1-1 enhances public safety, crisis recovery efforts, 2-1-1 is also a valuable community impact partnership with Interface, Family Services, United Way of Ventura County, First 5 Ventura County, providing assistance to well over 19,000 residents during this past year. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of February 7th, 2011, as 2-1-1 Week in Ventura County. I'd like to come down and share this with Dave and First 5 and Eric. And also, real quick, you know, just about five years ago, I think, or six years ago, Dave, you were in Oxnard, and we were talking about Don't Borrow Trouble with the Board of Realtors. And I remember I was in my backyard, working at the time, and I'm not sure if the mayor didn't show, or somebody didn't show, but I ended up out there with a, full of dirt and everything on my forehead to present, or to receive that, or help with the 2-1-1.
I don't remember the dirt on the forehead.
But I was there. Go ahead.
Well, it's a great memory, Mr. Supervisor. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for inviting us to be here today, and thank you very much for the proclamation and support of 2-1-1. I guess, just a couple of quick comments. 2-1-1, you know, from the outset, has been something that's required tremendous community support. And I think our program in Ventura County has been particularly blessed to receive the support of the Board of Supervisors, the county's health care agency and human services agency, and seven of the cities in Ventura County are now supporting 2-1-1. And it is a program that requires that type of partnership, and I think that the residents of Ventura County can be pleased that Interface, United Way, and First 5 Ventura County had the vision together to come together and start 2-1-1 six years ago in this county. And I know Supervisor Wong, you were right there with us at the beginning. I thank you for that support. So, I'd like to turn it over to Eric Stroud, who's the Executive Director of Interface. I know you have a few comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to reassure you that some of the discussions we had a couple of years back now about getting a broad base of support for 2-1-1 has really happened. And the board's, I think, courage in terms of stepping forward and putting some challenge funds out there has really been met by support, increasing support from the cities. We actually have some state funding coming in as well, and I know that that was not in place when you stepped forward to really support 2-1-1. 2-1-1 is strong and vibrant today, and I can definitely tell you, both Dave and I are working actively at the state level and influencing state-level policies and decisions so that they can benefit what we're doing here in Ventura County. And we have one of the strongest 2-1-1s that is operating. And I think that we have you to thank for, Supervisor Wong, in particular, for your leadership in helping to kind of push that forward. So, deeply thankful, and really, there are almost 20,000 residents in, across the county that have benefited in a direct way, all together receiving about 33,000 referrals to services because of the support that we've received from you, and also the support that's really been continuing from the beginning all the way through from United Way and First 5. Other partners are also now starting to recognize the value of 2-1-1, other nonprofits, and so I think we're going to have a pretty exciting few years ahead of us in terms of really making the service the most efficient way for the community to get to the services that are available for them. So, just really deeply thankful and pleased to share the celebrations that we're going to do on Thursday morning with you. We've gotten support from each of the major law enforcement departments across the county, the sheriff and the major police departments, as well as the community colleges, CLU, and Channel Islands, to have their officers be handing out 2-1-1 cards in the course of their contact with the public, starting on Friday, the sixth anniversary. So, that's an exciting new kind of resource for them to enable officers to get that resource into the hands of the public and move on to the rest of their important emergency duties, and let us pick it up from there in terms of the referrals. So, the partnership is really growing and developing, and really thankful for your support.
And Claudia, I was going to say, a few things.
Good morning. Thank you for this recognition. I have to say, it's truly been an honor to be a part of this amazing effort. There's actually a seventh year. I call that the basement year, because that was the year that we were building the database in the basement, and we were proud to be a part of that and then to watch. And you've heard about the 20,000 people and 33,000 referrals, but moreover, they're all happy. Interface does satisfaction surveys regularly, and what we find are really high satisfaction levels. People feel connected, people feel like they're getting what they need. It's really been exciting to watch the diversity of uses, and you've heard about that this morning, from law enforcement to disaster preparedness, but really, to linking people to services, which is one of the most important things that we can do for them. When I go to, when I call my doctor's office and I ask for some information, and they say, "Call 2-1-1," and proceed to explain it to me what it's all about, I smile, and I say, "We've arrived." So, many thanks to you as a strong partner, to the other county agencies that have participated, to United Way for championing this effort, to Interface for building it, and for those cities and other supporters that have become true partners as well. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question here? I think it's so appropriate for us to try to celebrate everybody that's coming together for this. You say seven cities. Could you identify those seven cities? It'd be good for us to kind of read them into the record today.
Sure, I'll try to do that by memory here. So, well, Camarillo has been there for a long time in their support, Simi Valley, Port Huiney, Moore Park, Ventura, Ojai. Tanya?
Oxnard.
And Oxnard, yeah, obviously, Oxnard, yeah.
The most important city.
How could I do that? Yeah, so, and again, the rationale that we had put together was a proportionate support depending on their utilization of the service, and everybody really just buys into that for the most part. We still have a couple of cities we're pursuing actively, but so, a broad range.
But I think it's good for us to honor and recognize those cities also. But I think it's, it's good for us to honor and recognize those cities also at the same time for September.
Madam Chair, I also want to share that Bonnie Weigle's here with us to put chairs in the back.
Oh, this is, we're the fan club.
And also our, our chair from United Way, and also the, some of our, Mike Powers, where's Mike Powers? From United Way, so all the United Way families here too, so I want, I want to thank them for being here.
Could they come up?
Yeah.
And of course, I get to talk about 2-1-1, but Tanya Kellum, our 2-1-1 director, is really the one who makes, makes it happen, and, and we had 99% of, of the consumers that have called in when we did follow-ups saying that they were satisfied with the service and would recommend it to somebody else, so, so that's, hats off to Tanya and the team.
Start it from here, and then ending with Mr. Powers, if you could all just move that way, just do a little train.
Thank you. it is such an important service during an emergency that people can use 2-1-1 to find out what they can do to help, and also what they can do to get help. So it's just, it's nice, instead of flooding the 911 lines, it is an important service. And I did have someone once asked me, "How do you get 2-1-1?" She tried it on the internet and couldn't get there. I said, "It's a phone number you dial, 2-1-1." Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, Dave.
Our next item on our agenda is item 20, this is 10:00 AM time certain also, and this is regarding the termination of a contract with G Coast Construction, as well as executing a contract with Draper Construction, and Ms. Norma's here.
Thank you. Good morning, Board members. Ms. Robinson, for the record, my name is Norma Camacho, Director of the Watershed Protection District, and as indicated, we're here to talk about the termination of a contract and the award of a contract for the Royal Simi Flood Wall project. Again, in November of 2010, we had awarded a contract for vegetation removal and replanting along the Royal Simi Flood Wall. This award is made to G Coast Construction. Now, just to give a, a little background, the vegetation removal is absolutely essential to meet FEMA levy certification requirements, and must be fully completed before we can ensure that the levy is accredited by FEMA. Again, on November 9th, we issued a notice of award to G Coast specifying clearly what submittals were going to be required before the notice to, to proceed could be issued for this project. To date, G Coast has been unable to provide submittals that are acceptable to the district, thereby making us unable to initiate a notice to proceed for the project. In question is the depth of the removal of roots. We contend that the plans and specifications were very clear on what needed to be done to meet levy certification requirements. Now, on December 13th, G Coast then issued a letter to us indicating its intent for us to terminate this contract, but then they later reversed their position on January 21st, indicating that they would continue with the contract, but they still contended that the specs were not clear, and that they would be issuing a change order. At this point in time, 100% of the contract time has gone by, and 0% of the work has been completed. Therefore, we are recommending that the board terminate this contract and award the contract to Draper Construction. Draper Construction has submitted a bid that is still 21% below the engineer's estimate, and only $3,000 more than the G Coast bid. Draper has also indicated to us that they fully understand the root removal requirements, and also will comply with the specifications as written by the district. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them. Also, Phil Nelson, Director of our Engineering Services Department, is here to answer specific questions on the bid process. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also do have a couple of public comment cards, too. Are there any questions right now from the board, or I'll go to the comment, comment cards first? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Camacho. My first comment card is Ezra Levi, and he is with G Coast. Thank you.
Good morning. First, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to make some comments on the previous speaker. You've been told that the submittal was not provided. I don't think it's accurate. We did provide all the submittal that we could. They're saying that the removal of the roots is clear. It's not clear. None of the work completed, and the day for construction elapsed. There's nothing I can do if they don't give me notice to proceed and to go to work. We did have a dispute about the explanation of what's the meaning of sufficient enough for root removal. The spec and the plan call for removal of vegetation to be specifically 15 foot away from the wall horizontally, but vertically, they didn't write anything. They just write sufficient enough. Sufficient enough in the industry, we're removing roots and removing trees, and sufficient enough for us is take the root ball out. And in the pre-construction meeting, when, when someone made a comment about the depth of the roots, and when I asked a question like, "How far we have to chase them?", like the sentence come up like, "It can go up to China. Wherever they go, you have to go after them." And this will be definitely unforeseen condition. Many contractors will go in and just will fight with you later. I tried to get the picture before. I sent three RFI. The answer was coming back sufficient enough. I beg, tell me how deep you want me to go? You tell me, any contractor will go just without unforeseen condition and bring equipment, and just go and dig, and dig, and dig. How far you go? That's never been answered. It was a legit question for me to ask, I did not get an answer. During the process, I've been told, of trying to clarify this, I've been told by Chris Smith, and you can testify if it's not true, we did submit all what we needed, but they wanted to resubmit. At the time of the argument, it told me do not proceed with the submittal at this point. On the table was discussion is, "So listen, I'm here to make a living. I have a company that is supporting my life, my family. I work hard, I got seven kids to support. What you about to decide today can destroy my, my company and my abilities to support my family. So I don't have any objection to go to the next bidder. All I have here, the language of the decision cannot tab the word termination. It just will destroy us completely. I don't mind to mutually agree to terminate that. I'm not going to have any, any claim after that. They can go to the next bidder, there's only $3,000. It's not that much. If they can work with him, if they think something we define, I have some news. They will have some news when they go into the construction over there. It's not going to be end here. But nevertheless, I'm willing to work, I just don't want to damage my company. If it's okay with you to have a decision, mutually termination, which not, will show on the record that we refuse to do the work because we do not. I sent many letters that I'm willing and ready to do the work. Actually, they sent me a letter a few weeks ago telling me, "You have two options, either to perform, or to be terminated." I said with my attorney, which by the way, I asked him not to come today even though he's willing to fight, and he believes strongly that the county will be in breach of a contract, because they have never issued the notice to proceed, the specification. I don't want to go that route, I don't want to use that language. You have a lot on your head, there's so many important subjects, I got to go up there and make my living. What can we do without shooting at each other and, and you know, causing damage? You just want to perform with the other? I'm not objecting to that. So please reconsider the language there.
Thank you, and we'll ask our staff about that, and you have no problem with us going to another bidder, so.
No, we'll remove any claim or anything. I'm not here to cause you damage. We're here to make a living, that's all I want.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have one more public comment speaker, and then we'll go back to our staff.
Thank you.
And this is Rob Draper. With Draper Construction.
Yes, hello. Rob Draper, representing Draper Construction. I was asked by the Watershed District to appear just to state that we are prepared to enter into contract and complete the project per plans and specifications. That's all I have.
Thank you. It's good to know that, if you're awarded, you will take the contract. Are there any questions from the board? And Ms. Camacho, do you want to make any comments further?
No, not at this time. The only comment I have in regards to the submittals is that the submittals, I just want to make clear that the submittals were provided to us, but they were inadequate. And basically, a lot of it was transportation plan and their SWIP plans.
Thank you. So the motion then that staff is requesting is to terminate the contract with G Coast, and then to go ahead and execute the contract with Draper based on the specifications. Do we have a motion?
Move the recommended action.
We have a motion in a second, if everyone could please vote. Thank you, and that does pass unanimously. We were requested to hold this one item until 10:30, and that was, let's see.
But we still, but we still have the 10:30.
Item number 29. So we'll go to that now, Public Works Agency, is there objection here?
Is Harrison here yet? Oh, they are here. Okay, great, all right. I saw the site at 29, I mean, I saw we had, still have 10:30, okay, that's great.
Okay, and this is regarding providing consolidated disposal contract to Harrison, I believe, is that right?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Parks, and members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. I am Bruce Beluski, the Manager of the Integrated Waste Management Division of the Public Works Water and Sanitation Department. I appreciate your time this morning to allow for my brief presentation. As approved by your board in 2004, all service, all solid waste service collection providers operating within the unincorporated area of the county must maintain a franchise agreement with the County of Ventura. Each of the total of 21 such agreements is administered by the Integrated Waste Management Division. Pursuant to the terms and conditions of each agreement, any agreement may be signed, sold, or transferred. It is our recommendation, your board authorize the Director of the Public Works Agency or his designate, to provide written consent to the requested assignment of consolidated disposals residential and commercial service collection agreements. That concludes my presentation. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments?
I have a question for the applicant, whoever wants to speak on behalf of Harrison.
And if you could fill out a blue comment card when you're done, thank you.
Appreciate, all right, there you go. Appreciate you being here, I certainly am supportive of making this change, and I think we've seen a number of areas where Harrison Industries has been very proactive and a leader in terms of taking us to recycling, et cetera. And my question for you, Jim, is just, Ojai Organics, I just want to confirm that you, your intention is to still use Ojai Organics for your Ojai Valley Green Waste Recycling? Great, that's, that's what I wanted to confirm. One of the great advantages is that they, Ojai Organics then distributes the product in Ojai, so it just doesn't make sense to ship material all the way down, to then ship it all the way back up after it's been composted, and it's better to be able to do that. So, thank you very much, and thanks for the good work that you guys have engaged in across the board, in terms of your support for the community and projects that you're on. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Jim, I just want, want to thank you for your excellent work, you know, I've had, I've worked with Jim for many, many years when I was with the city, so you continue to do that excellent work, and I want to thank you for, for your efforts, and your recycling efforts, AB 939, your transfer station, and, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the public testimony. Supervisor Bennett's made a motion.
Move the recommended action.
Supervisor Zaragoza, if we could all please vote. It's nice to have a good service there to pick up 2-1-1 leaves. And that is approved unanimously. Thank you for your report and your good work. We'll now go to our 10:30 time certain. This is a, a great presentation I'm looking forward to. We have with us after this morning, we have the commanding officer of our naval base, Captain Jim McHughes, so thank you for being here. I know if you'd like to come down and maybe introduce our presenter, Celine.
Well, do, Madam Chair, County Board of Supervisors, Ms. Robinson, good morning, and thank you for allowing us the time on your agenda to speak about the important topic today of compatible land use around Naval Base Ventura County, particularly at Point Magoo. As you know, the development is, of compatible land use is very important to Navy operations at Naval Base Ventura County, not, not just to the Navy or the mission, but also to, helps us maintain the 17,000-plus jobs we have out there, and the economic impact to the community of $1.7 billion, and also the future of Naval Base Ventura County. The support of the County of Ventura towards the protection of MBBC's military influence area, which you will see in the upcoming presentation, is critical in preventing any kind of encroachment onto the installation. I'm blessed as an installation commanding officer to really have a very supportive community here surrounding my base, but I believe it's my duty and to educate the community and you as leaders about the issues that we need your support on. So as part of that education process, I'll be hosting an Elected Leaders in Decision-Making Land Use Forum on the 20th April at Cal State Channel Islands. This is a follow-on to our previous staff-level land use forum that we held last November, a very successful event. So hopefully you may be able to find in your busy schedules to attend that. Today, however, in the time allotted, I have my community planner and liaison officer, Celine Matula, here to provide you an overview of the issues and discuss specific tools and processes that will help the county assist MBBC in preventing incompatible development, and so that the Navy's mission will be able to proceed. So thank you again for giving us the time and the agenda, and I'll turn it over to Celine.
Thank you very much for being here and for this presentation.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, Mrs. Robinson, thank you again for the time to make this presentation, and I believe I have the clicker right here. So let me go through the agenda of what I'd like to, to talk with you about. Primarily, we'd like to talk about the incompatible land use at the naval, at the naval base or in and around the naval base. And actually, there isn't really incompatible land use, but we want to promote compatible development, which is, which is why I'm here today. And so, to give you context, I'd like to talk a little bit about Naval Base Ventura County operations, what it is that we do. You're very familiar with the operations, but I'd like to just quickly go over those. And then I'll talk about the potential encroachment or incompatible land use that might occur in and around the naval air station, the naval base specifically, and especially within our military influence area, and we'll talk specifically about what makes up the military influence area in my discussion. influence area in my discussion. And I'd like to touch a little bit about encroachment prevention programs that we have locally that we can put into place in conjunction with the County Board and other municipalities around us, and also talk about VOD-wide programs that we have access to as well that would provide potentially planning grants to the county and other municipalities in the area as well. And at the end of my discussion, I'd like to talk about potential ways that we can join our efforts to help us prevent compatible, incompatible land use and continue our existence here as Naval Base Ventura County for the long term. So, as a part of Naval Base Ventura County, we have three sites in essence. We've got Naval Base Ventura County, Point Magoo, Port Wanemi, and San Nicholas Island. And at Point Magoo, we've got four active squadrons that are primary operations and other squadrons as well, including the National, International Guard as well uses our air facilities. And we also support the Naval Air Warfare Center Weapons Division, which runs the 36,000-square-mile sea test range as well. And one of the things that we're particularly proud of at Naval Base Ventura County is our natural resource program, where we've got significant critical land uses, wetlands in particular, that is a critical element of the region's wetland complex. And the 100,000 rain mammals that I refer to, they're really at San Nicholas Island, but it's part of our natural resources program that we run out of Point Magoo. And five of the six endangered, certain endangered species are at Point Magoo. One of them is at the San Nicholas Island as well.
Before you go on.
Yes, sir.
How many planes are there in a squadron?
In each squadron, there are four aircraft for the E-2 squadrons. And VR-55, I'm not exactly sure, but C-130s are primarily what make up that squadron. And DX-3 is a testing evaluation squadron for the Naval Air Warfare Center in testing and evaluating new platforms and weapon systems at the.
And so, the four E-2C Hawkeye squadrons means there are 16?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Although there is a future possibility of getting an additional aircraft per squadron as well, so that would make it 20. Let's switch over to Port Wanemi. We have several major commands at Port Wanemi. It's the Naval Sea Systems Command, the Port Wanemi Division, that runs the Service Warfare Engineering Facility. We've got two major naval facilities engineering commands, the Engineering Logistics Center and the Engineering Service Center, as well as a significant presence of CBs. In fact, we are the West Coast mobilization site for CBs to the war theater. And we also have some commercial components since we are the deep-water port identified in this area, commercially identified, and we have a joint use agreement with the offshore harbor district, probably familiar with, and the global auto processing service as well is a major component of our enhanced use lease program. So, the question is, what is encroachment? It's incompatible land use primarily, especially when you talk about the military mission. My major concern is what impact that would have on our mission capabilities. Ultimately, we're concerned that there's a potential that the mission could get reduced, and that would certainly reduce the viability of our economic impact to the area, and we would want to avoid that. There are several components to our encroachment, our possibilities for encroachment, and basically, again, it's the possibility that we would reduce our ability to perform a military mission. Navy-wide, there are 14 encroachment challenges that affect naval installations around the country, and what I'd like to do is just really focus on those that impact Naval Base Ventura County. And primarily, we're concerned about urban development. There are proposals that are considering residential development within our military influence area, and again, I'll show you a depiction. In fact, if you look at your handout, then I, the fact sheet on the back of it is a depiction of the military influence area, and it's something that we'd like to see the board adopt in its general plan for the County of Ventura in the future. But the concern is an incompatible land use like residential or certain types of retail office that bring in a lot of people, churches, schools, those kinds of things, there would be incompatible development within the military influence area, generally speaking, although there's some specifics that we'd get into as we go along and talk about them in more detail. And of course, it's airborne noise. The aircraft that we fly would impact the community that ends up developing potentially around us, and we'd want to avoid that. That airborne noise could generate into noise complaints, which would then potentially cause a decrease in our ability to operate. And of course, certain endangered species being displaced onto the naval base are a concern as development occurs that pushes, reduces the amount of land that animals and birds could live in, and they'd get displaced onto the naval base. That's a potential. And of course, one of the more significant concerns at both the Wanemi Base and the Magoo Base is the security issues relating to the potential for terrorism activity or protection of the force is our primary concern there. So, we've got a number of initiatives that are in our toolbox that we can use that can help us along in preventing encroachment. We've got our military influence area that's made up primarily of our air installation compatible use zones. I'll get into more detail on what that all means, but the military influence area is that graphic that's depicted there, and of course, it's on the back of your handout as well. The other thing you see depicted there is an air installation compatible use zone study, something that we typically do every decade or so, and we're about to do. The other thing that we can do is work with the staffs of the municipalities in the area to get development and building standards that promote compatible development within the military influence area developed into county code and city codes and so on and so forth. So, that's something that we'll continue to work with your staff to get implemented. Another program we have is encroachment partnering, and in encroachment partnering, basically, we're acquiring development rights on property, and we'll get into more detail on what the encroachment partnering is all about and how there's a Department of Defense program that supports that program as well. And we've got, the REPI program is that Department of Defense program that we'll talk about, and I'll get into the acronym later as well. And then there's the possibility of doing a joint land use study, and that's really, would be a land use study that would be in the hands of a municipality, say the County of Ventura, and we would get, you would get support from the military specifically in terms of what our land use limitations are and what our operations are, and how that could be pushed forward. That's all part of a planning grant that the Office of Secretary of Defense might grant. So, let's talk about the military influence area. Military influence area is primarily made up of, as I said, the air installation compatible use zones, but there are other components. The majority of the military influence area is covered by air flight tracks, air routes, flight routes coming into the naval station. And we're concerned in developing a military influence area of what impact the military would have on the community and vice versa, what impact the community would have on the military operations as well. And our main focus is, again, to maintain our operational value. The other thing that the military influence area does, yes, sir?
One of the things, I think, you know, being a member of RDP 21, that testing zone is probably one of the most unique zones there is, you know, in the whole U.S. for that matter, you know, and I think it's extremely important that we understand how important that encroachment issue is there.
Yes, sir. You're talking about the sea test range?
Yes, the sea test range. And it's extremely important because I understand, I know the captain has mentioned it in our meetings, that how unique that zone is, you know, and how important it is that we maintain, you know, that encroachment level down to a point where it won't affect, you know, the testing, you know, so I think it's extremely important that we understand that.
I have two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
Cal State Channel Islands is inside that military influence area?
Yes, sir, it is.
And then on your last slide, you identified, you know, things that you're trying to do to, you know, building standards and all that to try to be proactive on encroachment. Are you familiar with the SOAR initiatives in Ventura County?
Yes, sir.
And generally, I would assume you're supportive of them because they make it less likely to have development around there?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, that's one of the things that, well, I'll talk about in a little bit, about how we can potentially support that program.
Great.
To some degree. So, let's talk about the air installation compatible use zone program. This is an effort that actually meets some of the standards that the County of Ventura would be interested in as well, and we're protecting the health, safety, and welfare of both the civilians and the military on base as well. What the air installation compatible use zone does is it recommends compatible land uses that are compatible with the noise zones, the accident potential zones, and the height restrictions that we'd have in and around an air station. As you might imagine, height of buildings and certain things, towers and so on are of issue when you're talking about flying aircraft. And as I mentioned, it's a study that we're ready to start doing here in the next year. We're about doing, in fact, we're past doing more than likely. So, that depiction of, the graphic there is the noise zones and the accident potential zones all on one graphic. The blue is the noise zones, and the yellow, orange, and red are the accident potential zones. And I'll get into more detail what the accident potential zones mean here on the next slide. The accident potential zones identify areas within which there might be the possibility or likelihood of an accident. It's based on air operations in a broad number of venues, not only naval air stations, but airports and so on. And you will see there that there's APZ-1 and APZ-2. The frequency of accidents decreases as you go into the APZ-2. In APZ-1, it becomes greater, and then on the airfield itself, it's called the clear zone, it's greatest at that point. You also see here the imaginary surfaces. What that basically does is it creates a bowl within which the aircraft can operate. So, you've got from the airfield, a seven-to-one transition slope for a certain distance, a 20-to-one slope that comes off of that, and the approach/departure clearance zones have a 50-to-one slope. Again, it creates this bowl, and this is the area where aircraft operate safely, and our concern would be things that pierce those imaginary surfaces, like buildings or wind turbines, towers, those kinds of things. Any questions on that, somewhat technical? And then our noise zones. Clearly, people are affected by noise in different ways, but generally speaking, noise is unwanted sound, and clearly, we'd want to avoid that kind of a situation where there's an aircraft flying right over residences. And the main source of noise that you might see is, of course, aircraft flying over, but there's also the possibility of engine run-ups and other kinds of operations that would come out of the air station. In California, the community noise equivalent level is the way that we measure noise. You'd see dB as the noise measurement, but what CNEL does is it averages noise over a period of the entire day. So, at night, noise is measured at a much higher level than it would be during the daytime, and it really depends on the frequency of events as well as, again, the time of day and then the actual sound level itself. And what you see depicted there is our noise zones. The 60 CNL is the dashed line, and then the 65 to 75, which is where usually you'd find incompatible land uses or at least criteria for creating compatible land use in the 65 to CNEL, the 75 CNL, and then above. I'm going to switch a little bit of focus to Port Wanemi for a moment. We do have a security area. It's a 500-foot buffer that goes around the perimeter of the base, and there are other concerns that relate to this, and that has to do with development that might occur in the perimeter, say in the area of the Channel Islands Harbor. I understand there is a development, the Fisherman's Wharf development. We'd be interested in finding out more about the project, and we'd have some concerns as it relates to view into the base, as well as some traffic concerns at the corner there in Victoria and Channel Islands, and something that we'd like to continue to have discussions with the county on.
Have you had any conversations with either county staff or with the project develop, the proposed project?
Very limited discussions. I think we just started hearing a lot about it in recent weeks. Thank you.
Would that be on the height, over Fisherman's Wharf that you're concerned about?
Potentially, potentially, but there are some solutions that could be put in place, such as switching, a change in orientation potentially that would avoid that direct access view. More concerning is the traffic, I think, than anything else.
Okay.
The other areas that are of concern in this, as it relates to this, the Port Wanemi Base, is on the strand. Of course, it's really not a county issue per se. Some of those homes are quite on the fence line practically. It's nothing we can really do about it, but it's some effort that we need to put into play probably in terms of security and policing and so on.
You're talking about a buffer outside of the base or a buffer from the base to, or an internal buffer?
It's a buffer that's from the perimeter, the perimeter of the base from the fence line out.
So, you're looking for a 500-foot buffer on non-naval base property?
Actually, it's not that we're looking for it, but it's something of a concern. It's an area that we'd like to put our efforts.
You want to pay attention to it?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
And so, it's the visual access is the primary issue. What I wanted to point out on this graphic is the existence of the mobilization corridors from the Wanemi Base to Point Magoo as well as to the 101 Highway in a wartime situation. Yes, we're in a wartime situation, but there's a need to suddenly mobilize, then we would use these mobilization corridors out to the 101 freeway if the porch were full. So, that's the military influence area. Again, the call-out boxes that you'll see identify specifically what each of the boundaries of the military influence area are made up of, and those are the components that we just talked about.
Could you tell me what the distance is between the naval base and Point Magoo?
And naval base, Point Magoo?
Yeah.
The Port Wanemi and Point Magoo?
Yeah, yeah, right, Port Wanemi.
It's about 10 miles.
That's 10 miles, huh?
Sure.
Wow, okay, thank you.
So, the military influence area would be the major component that would be part of our approach to the county in terms of identifying development and building standards that could be included into the county code as it relates to new developments that might come up. What's I wanted to bring out here? So, in terms of what sort of backing we'd have to work with the county, there is some state guidelines that are identified in this community military compatibility planning document that was developed by the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, signed out in December of 2009, and it proposes ways that the local municipalities can work with the military and including military compatibility with the general plan process. Again, the focus is maintaining quality of life and public safety, and there are some state legislation elements that provide support in that arena to assembly bills and to state bills, and it basically encourages that consultation between the naval base and the municipalities that surround the base. And a few of those bills that affect us are SB 1462, which requires coordination as general plans are updated, and SB 1468 requires that military compatibility gets incorporated into a general plan. AB 1108 addresses sequen notification for projects that might be in the military influence area. Actually, it specifically is within a certain distance of the base, but we would like to get that applied to the military influence area as a whole. And AB 2776 applies to real estate disclosure around airports, but there is obviously a military airport element to that as well. An example of how we could actually come together is taking the land use elements specifically, these are the ways that we can specifically incorporate the military compatibility into the general plan, and it would be a way for us to use these military compatibility tools that we just spoke about and really provide for a joint involvement between the community and the military. So, another tool that we have is encroachment partnering. I think this is really important for us to maintain the agricultural areas around the air component of Naval Base Ventura County, and the kinds of partners that we might have are state and local agencies, including the county, and potentially environmental nonprofits and so on, the Nature Conservancy, and state agencies like the California Coastal Conservancy as well. The Office of Secretary of Defense has the Readiness and Environmental Protection Initiative in place. It's done quite well in terms of preserving acres of land, specifically open space and agriculture, and it could be something of a program that we could use here as well.
So, are there potentially funds available to purchase, for example, easements on agriculture land?
There is, and.
Make sure that it stays undeveloped.
The way it would work is a piece of property could be bought primarily with our partner, say the Nature Conservancy, and then the Department of Defense would purchase the development rights for that property. So, not the whole value of the property, but just the development rights specifically.
Because I know there is one large agricultural property owner in that area around the base, and you would recommend, though, instead of outright purchasing the development rights yourselves? yourselves, the Navy, it should first go to, like, the Nature Conservancy?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, you know, I know of other examples where that land is still in agricultural use, you're still allowed to be doing just what it's been doing all along.
Yes, ma'am.
But it just gets used, that guarantee.
And in fact, there's an example that I'd like to talk about, Naval Station Fallon in Nevada, and obviously, it's a different area, but this is a program in the La Hantin Valley where they were able to come up with a partnership with La Hantin Valley land and water lines with the goal of retaining the land use as agricultural and open space. And it was a very successful program, and it saved thousands of acres. And it could be something that could be implemented as well at Naval Base Ventura County.
And the city and the county, you know, there's a committee working with Conservancy, with Peter Brand and other individuals, you know, to work on Ormond Beach and quite a few areas there to maintain the open space and also to assist the Ormond Beach wetlands too.
And we are, we are talking to the Coastal Conservancy.
Peter Brand.
To Peter Brand specifically, to figure out how we can, how we can work together. And really, we're focused in that area, in the military influence area. And I think there's some opportunities, and we're working on those. And of course, we're constantly looking for partners that could potentially help along in this effort as well. Another tool that we have in our toolbox, and it's really at the Office of Secretary of Defense level, is the Joint Land Use Study, Office of Economic Adjustment, actually. And it's a program where it would focus on the promotion of compatible development in a military influence area. Mission compatibility is the primary focus, and it really involves the local planning process at the municipality level. So really, it's not a study that would be owned by the Department of Defense or by the naval base itself, but by the community. And one of the ways that we can show support for that is through the development of a resolution. In fact, we have a draft resolution that we've been, we've been working on and about ready to prepare some time with the planning department to go through it and figure out how we can get it in front of you as a board and get it approved potentially.
And you were also talking about general plan consistency, looking at having that military influence. I guess it'd be like an overlay zone.
Yes, ma'am, exactly. And in fact, in the Joint Land Use Study, to go back to that, the nomination actually requires that there be some level of support, either a letter or a resolution. I think the most effective way is a resolution. That might be something that we'll come to you very soon on. So in terms of the next steps in our encroachment prevention program, we want to continue to work with the county planning department and so on to get our building and development standards incorporated into the county code with the focus of maintaining our operational and community value here, economic value. We'd like to continue to use our tools, and we'll continue to do so, and potentially step up to use some encroachment partnering in the area and incorporate a joint land use study also. And creating partnerships is probably the greatest way that we're going to do it, and hopefully, this is a way that we can step out with the county and create that partnership. And Captain McHugh mentioned the April 20th Community Land Use Forum specifically for elected leaders and decision makers. And again, we hope that some of you can make some time in your schedule to participate in that. It's, it would be an all-day event with sessions at the university during the morning, and then a tour of the base, Point Magoo specifically, but with an E-2 trainer visit potentially, and watching a missile shoot if that's something that can be scheduled. So that's something to put on your schedule if you could. Other than that, we hope that the Community Land Use Forum will help us continue to develop innovative approaches, not just those that we spoke about here, but explore additional opportunities as well.
Does seem like the Joint Land Use Study would be very worthwhile and working with our planning department on that, so I definitely would encourage that, and particularly if you can bring some planning grant funds for that study, I think that'd be really helpful.
I didn't mention that with the Joint Land Use Study, how it typically works is that the grant is for 90% of the cost for the development of Joint Land Use Study, and the 10% that remains would be by the municipality, but it could be provided by in-kind services. So staff review, staff participation, and so on. So that's something that could end up being pursued, I'm sure. This study typically costs about $200,000 or $300,000, so we're talking about that kind of a financial commitment, again, in-kind.
And we can work to bring that back to the Board of Supervisors to see if we want to move forward on that. Supervisors Aragosa?
Madam Chair, before, I'm proud of going to, I think, the next slide is questions.
It is.
But before you go, I would just want to recognize that we have our City of Oxnard Councilmember Carmen Ramirez here in the audience, you know, just for information. Raise your hand, Carmen. Thank you, welcome.
In fact, I wanted to mention now, my C.U., Councilmember Ramirez, that the City of Oxnard actually has been very helpful in getting the, our military influence area incorporated into the general plan. In fact, it is a part of the general plan. There's a chapter on military compatibility in their general plan, and that's something that we'd like to see, a similar approach with the county of Ventura as well.
You know, one of the, and I know you have some of the questions, but the, I've been with the Regional Defense Plan for years and years, and also, of course, our supervisor Long has been to, and City of Oxnard representatives going back to DC, to help, you know, the Ventura County Naval Base to keep that encroachment issues in the forefront so we don't develop their and Ormond, and especially that fly zone that's so important to the base.
That's right.
We've also taken measures, at least dealing with turbines, to make sure that we don't have tall ones that can impact flight routes. But there's more to do.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one speaker card after you, so are there any other questions?
Yeah, just the status of Ormond Beach inside your military use area?
A part of it is in the military influence area.
Just part of it, right, thank you.
That would be the. The north of Ormond Beach, which is on the south side.
Yeah, right by Wainimi Road or.
It's south of Wainimi Road, yes.
South of Wainimi, yeah.
I just, yeah, there are definitely a lot of tools that you have, that the county has also. We have recently made it easier to do easements to protect agriculture, open space lands too, and so we'll look forward to moving forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you again for the time.
Thank you. And Mr. Terry, you wanted to come speak?
Just briefly.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors and Staff. Bill Terry, live in south Oxnard, fully supportive of this. It'd be nice if they could show this at the City Council of Oxnard. This is not only the national security, to ensure the national security and the security of employment of so many employees that the military input, and above all, the security of our natural resources. Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Supervisors Aragosa?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I want to thank Bill, you know, because I know Bill and Gloria and Pat, you know, have been very supportive of our military bases. And I think that the Captain says something important, and Terry said too, is that not only is this for the national defense and the environment, but additionally, you know, there's about, what was it, 18,000 jobs and $1.7 billion payroll that I think is extremely important to all of us, you know, here in Ventura County. The environment, the jobs, and.
National security.
And the national security is extremely important, and Ormond Beach is very important to us. So I want to thank you, Captain.
Thank you, and I, Supervisor on?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing the information in and certainly know that you've, there's been already lots of conversations with Peter Brand on the Conservancy and acknowledgement of the work of the Ormond Beach Task Force, and their strong support for the, protecting the encroachment, the non-encroachment areas in the footprint. So to have an extra tool to be able to bring this forward to, for the board as a resolution or a general plan adjustment, I think it's certainly valuable to take a good hard look at that and would agree that the, we'll help get the word out for the forum on the 20th because it would be another education piece for the community to understand the strong partnership we have with the base. Thank you.
Thank you for this call.
And I also just want to thank you for reaching out to the community. I know my staff member, Damon Wing, was able to attend your tour and get this information first, and it does seem very important for us to collaborate and have that partnership. So I look forward to that in the future. Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you, I appreciate it.
And we'll be working on that resolution to come back to the board with. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just ask that we go ahead and receive and file this report? And second by Supervisor Aragosa? And that also passes unanimously? I think we only have our closed session items now, so are we expecting an announcement, Mr. Smith?
No, we are not.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and adjourn from closed session, so thank you.